Thank you for joining us this evening for the June 8th, 2023, Monta Soreno, the Better Streets Commission Regular Meeting. Before the meeting is called to order, I would like to point out a few house rules to assist the commissioners, staff, and members of the public to successfully participate in this meeting. For tonight's meeting, Zoom is being used to allow public participation with the Better Streets Commission Regular Meeting. For those of you who can Zoom to participate, there are two icons, chat and raise hand. Please use chat only to report technical issues such as being unable to hear a commissioner speaking. Please use raise hand to be recognized by the chair and be able to speak to the commission. Only attendees using the Zoom application can use the raise hand option to comment. Participants calling in from a telephone will only be able to listen and cannot provide feedback or public comment. Lastly, when we are not all in the same room, all votes in the meeting must be taken by vote call. Right, I now will call the meeting of the Better Streets Commission for June 8th to order, vote call please. Commissioner Chayton?
Here.
Commissioner Nachvick is absent. Commissioner Masanola?
Yeah.
Commissioner Bella Waller?
Present.
And Chair Lawler, here. All right, moving on to the members of the day, are there any changes to the orders of the day, I'm assuming they're not soon. Oral communication, are there any members of the public wishing to speak on an item not on the agenda? There are no hands raised, all right, moving on to written communications, we have not received any written communications at this time. Okay, all right, moving on to unfinished business. Item one, bicycle and pedestrian master plan, consideration of new information. The engineer, Olivia, please.
Thank you, Chairperson Lawler. This is old business because the commission has been addressing the final adoption of bicycle pedestrian master plan since the draft was received in April. At previous meetings, the commission determined to amend the language and so continue the item to this meeting. Subsequent to your last meeting in April, a number of things have happened that is outlined in the staff report that give cause to potential further modification or suspension of the adoption until matters are resolved. Specifically, the change that was agreed to in the previous meeting was to include a statement in the report or in the master plan that the issue of access from the northwestern neighborhoods of the city to the central portion of the city was an issue that needed to be studied. And the commission actually voted to include that language. The subsequent issues include, on April 28th, an accident occurred on Dave's Avenue in front of the Vice Mayor's House, as it turns out. A pickup truck rolled over, knocking out the Vice Mayor's mailbox and so on. No one was hurt, but the Vice Mayor was out of town and the mayor was asked to observe the accident and the situation unfolding there, which he did. He provided, took photos and that led him to recommending to the city council that a ad hoc committee of the city council be created to study the issue of safety in the S-curve area where the accident took place. Since the, and at their meeting in in May, council did appoint or create an ad hoc committee made up of Mayor Mechacheck and council member Turner. The Vice Mayor was ineligible due to his residence proximate to the, to the area of study. And so that committee had begun work and taken a number of actions, including direction to the city manager to engage a surveyor and a traffic engineer to address and, and develop safety measures for the, the first S-curve coming from the, from the east. Survey work on that has been completed. The traffic engineer has visited the site and will be using the survey data, the topographic data to create a plan for safety improvements. So that is a work in progress and should be completed within the next 60 days if not less. Another issue that occurred was the receipt of an email from Ethan Jackson, whose wife previously served on city council, outlining a number of concerns for bicycle pedestrian safety. And that's included in your, in your package. The one of the items in that set of concern voiced by Mr. Jackson was access to the central part of the city from the Grand View and Viewfield neighborhoods. Not unlike the situation that Commissioner Bella Waller raised at your previous meeting. Except probably getting to the central part of the city from Vicneal is more treacherous even than traversing Highway 9, which is its own challenge. So that email was provided for you for your consideration and discussion. Finally, one item that sort of popped up out of nowhere was the mayor discovered that one of the exhibits in the master plan did not conform with, what would you say, common knowledge? And that was the functional classification map that is published by Caltrans, approved by FHWA, the Federal Highway Administration, and published by Caltrans. I looked into the matter and found that the consultant had used what Caltrans had published. The fact of the matter is it was out of date and needed to be revised. So, again, for your consideration is awaiting a final approval to the amendment to that functional classification system map that could be included in the final adopted BPMP. The particular variations is that what's in the master plan shows a portion of Twin Creeks and Chadbourne Lane as minor collectors. Chadbourne Lane is a dead end street and certainly is not a minor collector. The rest of Twin Creeks and Vineland Avenue, which are according to our circulation element, minor collectors, were not shown as such on the Caltrans map. So, request has been forwarded to, to Caltrans to amend that map, gone through the first two or three hoops with the bureaucracies to achieve that, and we're waiting on final FHWA approval to amend that functional classification map, which in turn could be included in a final adopted version of the BPMP. So those are sort of new news items as well as what you previously discussed for your consideration and discussion needed this evening. And that's all I would have to offer at this point. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. I want to start with questions. Do you have any?
I do know. No, other than I feel like possibly the work that's going to be done, probably going to be done on Dave's might be a separate item from the master plan. We want to discuss those as, as separate things.
All right, okay, so I will open it up to public comment first and then we'll come back and discuss. Are there any members of the public wishing to talk on this item? There are no hands raised, all right, back to the commission. Okay, so open for discussion. First of all, I just want to say good catch by the mayor on that one. Obviously, that needs to be correct, so it makes sense to hold off. But let's move on to, I think we have the language that we want to talk about with respect to connecting Vicneal.
Yeah, I think, I haven't seen that language.
It's not in here, I think we wanted to talk about that language, right? And I think we want potentially creating, well, it says that we've got these two now, we have the, what our neighbor, Mr. Jackson brought up about an easement connecting Grand View, yeah, and so that potentially could be in and of itself a study for both of those things, correct? Is that my understanding, okay? So there's that, and then a fourth, there's the S-curve, which would be a separate thing as well. So, I, I mean, it makes sense to me, I mean, obviously, everyone needs to weigh in on this, but it makes sense to me that we would wait until those issues, I, I appreciate your suggestions on creating a study for the issues of Vicneal and Grand View. And then we will work on the S-curve separately, since that was initiated by city council at a separate project. And wait until we get the, the final map before we send anything to council for final approval.
Did we also talk about, we've talked about a little bit about the trails, the equestrian trails? And we decided not to address that at all.
The study with respect to creating easements, right?
That was a separate thing, and I, I think that, because I do understand your point that people can misinterpret things, especially in when you're talking about their property. So, I believe the proper way to address that is simply to have somewhere in the document something which indicates, you know, a long-term dialogue with Loma Sorena, and that's it, just keep it very general, very nonspecific, but have it in there so that, that there's at least something to ping people or remind them. But I'm wondering, last time we had a procedural issue and Natalia wanted to bring up some possible change, so now that we're opening it back up, that's eligible.
Yeah, and that was, that was with respect to Highway 9 and Caltrans, right? Which has been a in that, you know, we all know that, that's been going on forever, in fact, Mr. Jackson refers to that. By law, that's been going on for a very long time, and it's because Caltrans is very it's difficult to, to get their attention, so I don't know if I mean, it's an interesting question, I think it makes sense that it would be included, but perhaps, again, it could be an additional note or an overlay because it's beyond our control as a city, right? When we put forth this map, this plan, these are all the things that we've identified that we can do over the long term to address safety issues, and Caltrans is something that we have to rely on in order to get that piece done, so I'm wondering if that would just complicate matters with respect to the master plan, but it could be like a you know, like a footnote or an overlay, perhaps? Does that make sense? I mean, that, I think that's my concern, I don't want to pin this on
I, I don't know that Natalia was able to fully articulate her thinking because we kind of cut her off. And so, I, I don't know exactly what you were contemplating.
It was a, it's a very, very minor change and you don't have to follow it.
Okay, well, since we're kicking, since we'll probably have to relay this anyway, if you want to maybe type it up for the next meeting, perhaps?
Okay.
Is that something that is acceptable?
Grand View Avenue a little later, you're in the meeting or are we discussing it now?
This is the item that we're talking about, so based on city engineers' recommendations that we confirm the language regarding the easement possibilities that we you also mentioned considering a subcommittee to review plans of the S-curve and table the, table the plan until the, the correct map comes up. So those are the things that we're looking at.
Just want to clarify, as far as I understood, the subcommittee is going to study only the S-curve. It's not going to study like, oh, this, that, yeah, and, okay.
I mean, if that just, sorry, can I just have, do a quick reminder just to make sure your microphones are lit? Yes, have a very soft, well, okay, perfect, that way we can make sure to listen. I need to it?
Sure.
Okay. Right, so then should we address this item one, confirm the language? I'm just making sure, so that way if we need to bring up the comment on everything that she's brought up, that we are able to do that, just for the record. All right.
Well, I apologize, we don't have minutes that could contain the language that the commission voted on at your last meeting.
I think it was
I think if we can confirm the language for the northwest access issue and where in the report the commission would have suggested be stated, they thought were sort of two parts of what you discussed. And then similarly, as you just suggested, Chair, adding a, a future study of access to the Grand View, Viewfield neighborhoods could be a companion to that language. What I understood, the vote in April said that there needed to be language committing, committing to the master plan or including a commitment in the master plan to study the issue in the future. The access through open space, the work for all, all of that certainly is, is what that study is going to address. I didn't, I don't recall anything beyond that being voted on, agreed to, for inclusion in the master plan at this time.
Okay, okay. Does anybody have any suggestions on the language?
How about study and explore possibilities for connecting the northwest neighborhood of Monta Sorena with the core of Monta Sorena? And then a similar language for the Grand View.
So the in this board, okay. I suppose that would be I guess, any possibilities to of safe routes from Grand View and Viewfield? Or would that be considered north or south?
I'm sorry?
Would that sound western?
Sort of central.
I think it should have been specified though, because it's, because it's Highway 9 too, right? So okay, study and explore, safe, what is it saying here? Then he, well, I guess it's really an ease, it would be an easement.
Well, again, I think keeping it general before the study is organized and commissioned and, you know, process is, is a good, if, if both of those statements or the statement regarding both those areas could be included in the recommendations section.
Yes, under chapter four.
I think we discussed putting in a long-term goal.
It could be four point three. So the recommendations from the study are chapter four, so there's four point one, four point two. And then you said, and there's, yeah, there's tables there, so we, we could potentially do a four point three and add that language. I would say study and explore development of a safe pathway from Grand View and Ridge View to Rose Avenue.
Or more generic, Highway 9 neighborhoods to the core.
Safe pathway from Highway 9 neighborhoods.
Yes, I agree with the language because it's not only two streets, but there are a lot of the streets and in order to get to the downtown Los Gatos, you have to walk on Highway 9, there is no other road.
Okay.
That's it. You get that?
Yeah.
It just happens when Grand View and Viewfield avenues that are located in the center of the gap that we're talking about.
Yeah.
I think the, the particularly unique factor in Commissioner Bella Waller's suggestion for the Vicneal area is you have that potential corridor free private property into the core.
Right.
Similarly, Grand View and, and Viewfield, beyond that gets tricky.
Right.
But those two have suggestions as to how to route bikes and kids through those neighborhoods to, into the core of the city.
So do you suggest that it should be more specific, the language?
Well, I don't think it has to, no, I don't, I've been keeping it broad and general because when that study work is commissioned, no reason to handcuff for people, the goal is to provide safe routes for bikes and kids, particularly younger, older versions of that.
And then, so then, any comments? Where should we place this in the document?
Do you recall that we're going to add another section for long-term goals?
There's long-term pedestrian projects, table four one.
Okay.
But those are already identified, right, by the study?
We were talking about putting it as, as the fourth item, and so Grand View could be the fifth item, L401. The cost would be TBD because it's just the study right now.
Sure, and we, could we ask, so what we could do is we could maybe create could we create a four point three to mention those, that language, and then then, then we could refer it to the long-term pedestrian project?
Yeah, I wondered having a section on long-term or
Future.
Future.
Future, and list them as studies, future studies.
To distinguish it and not get, lose it in the table, but have its own.
Because these have already been done and I got it.
Section, right.
Right, okay. That, that sounds good. All right, so that's clear, is everybody good with that?
Do we want another even more generic item regarding the equestrian trails in this section?
Yeah, where would you put something like that? I guess it would be what did you say, have a long-term, long-term?
A long-term, ongoing discussion. Keep it about, about that thing.
Okay.
So that nobody's
Ongoing discussion with Loma Sorena.
I think, could you include that as a sentence or, sentence or two in this new section, four point three?
Sure.
Because again, I think it, by getting the bold subsection headline, it gets more attention, right?
Right, okay.
Just inclusion in the tables.
Okay, I like that.
And I think in both cases, you're talking about bicycles and pedestrians. It's not one or the other, it's both.
Okay.
Do we have wording, I mean, we need to be very careful with that wording.
Well, I think what you said, an ongoing discussion or a dialogue with open dialogue with Loma Sorena regarding access. And they're real, they are really in your, in your neck of the woods, I don't, they don't really they're on the northern side of the neighborhood.
They're, they're, they touch a lot of different areas, I mean, at the end of Vineland, for example.
Yes, right.
So it, and it's also Twin Creeks.
Right, it goes, it goes north, yeah.
It near there.
Okay, so studying its four possibilities connecting northwest Monta Sorena with the core study possibilities of safe pathways from the Highway 9 neighborhoods to the core and an ongoing discussion or open dialogue, open, open a dialogue? You like that? Open a dialogue with Loma Sorena?
That even sounds more immediate, I would just say.
Okay, okay.
Sort of law, or maybe a long-term.
Long-term discussion.
Dialogue or discussion.
Long-term dialogue, let's do that. Okay. And that kind of just leaves it open for like you said, broad, okay. You like that? Great.
So the S-curve out of a discussion today?
Uh, no, but this is just specific to, I think that's, that's, okay, we just finished item number one. And item number two. And now, item number three would be consider appointing a subcommittee for studying review plans to regard safety at Dave's Avenue, Westerly Curve. So would you be, are, are you good on the, of the first item?
Where are these, I'm really very, what are the items?
Oh, they're on the agenda? I can pull it up, yeah.
I've got the agenda in front of me.
So it's, so it's page four of the agenda under analysis. So item one was confirm language about Vicneal and adjacent neighborhoods within that.
Is that at the top of the long step or what?
Yeah.
Um, I guess in addition to what's already been said, just to call your attention that the sandouts that are at your
Oh, yeah.
stations were provided by Mayor Mechacheck as a, an update, or one of them is the thicker one. And the thinner one is sort of an update to his update, which includes email, my email forwarding, responding to a question that he asked about right-of-way width versus street width and a derision for a sidewalk. So included in that smaller section are copies of the subject map that shows the Dave's Avenue right-of-way being 60 feet wide, the pavement being about 40 feet wide, so.
Do you have a question?
I think the question is how the commission would like to interact with that ad hoc committee.
I'm really sorry, but I was a little while following exactly where we were, I have one more topic on the plan, that's all right, and in its regard to the letter from, it was Mr. Jackson.
Yes, exactly.
And he pointed out something that there was a development and we didn't, nobody looked at it to see if something should be done along the street. And I feel like a, a bigger example of this is the thing now, the big project, I'm at the firehouse, and this would have been good for this committee to say, what can we do? Ask them to do, to improve safety whenever somebody's doing a development project, so I don't know if that I, I, I would like us to have opportunities to, to look at that, if it's possible. And I don't know if that should be included in the bike plan, or I have no idea what the mechanism should be.
That's, well, that's a really good question, right? I think we have to, is this something that, that can be an overlay on the the bike plan or is it a separate?
It's an interesting question, including that, and city code is written, giving responsibility to city staff to do review of land development projects, for example. I'm trying to, to search my brain, which is sort of a false cause, but come up with a way where the, a proposed development could be viewed by the commission. One of the challenges in that is these days the state has established very rigorous time limits on review of development, or if you don't do it on time, it automatically gets approved, so. I would need to sit, go back and, and talk with the city planner and city manager about how the Better Streets Commission, if I'm understanding your, your comment properly, would have the opportunity to review proposed development, if that's what.
Maybe it could be limited to streets that touch the, the bike and master plan, I don't know.
Well, would this be something that could be covered in the in the study that council's already commissioned? I mean, is that so
You're talking about the S-curve?
The S-curve.
I understood a broader
Yeah, mine was very generic.
Oh.
And any, any development and, and any development that's big enough, like the, the BGA might say it, they always review it for bicycle and pedestrian impacts. And so And so.
I wonder, I wonder if that is something that can be brought up in site and architecture.
Well, that's interesting.
Product on large projects.
And that seems like one reasonable way to do it.
Right, don't they usually? Look at that?
Yeah, but their their. Focus is on architecture.
Right.
One of the things that Steve Blenner and I have been discussing is that. The city code provides authorities. To require improvements. Physical improvements to streets. Along the frontage of projects which are as big as removing fifty percent of the of a house and. And rebuilding it or removing the entire house for that matter. And we're building a new one. Um, and from what I have seen. In um. Plan reviews. That the review of those larger projects has not included. Um, even the city engineer. Um. Or in some cases. Or speaking for myself. So um, our agreement is that we need to be sure that. When a project gets applied to architect, site and architecture, it gets reviewed holistically for all of the issues. Um, called forth by the city code. Um, there, I don't know of any history. Where that would include referral to the. Better streets commission. I'm not saying it couldn't be done. What I'd say is, I'd like to take that question back to. People who know, including city attorney and and so on, and bring back to you an answer to that question. Um, about how does BSC look at? Large projects and again, large in the city code context starts with. If you remove more than fifty percent of a house or if you tear down a house. That triggers review and requirement, certain conditions can be applied. And of course, if you subdivide. And the thing that's probably coming our way not too far now of the SP nine lot splits. Council was discussing changing the current. Rules and that may open up significantly more of those applications. Herefore, there's been none. Um, basically, so. Two two lots of the. The the problem there is that SB nine preempts the city's ability to require. Um, certain improvement, but. Other developments, um. Biggest one, of course, is Montalvo that you're referring to. That's history at this point. The Seaborn Court Development of Three Lots. Um, would have. Was or would have been an an opportunity. For the commission to look at it. So again, my my request would be to let me bring back to you or. Uh, at your next meeting. Uh, a discussion of that issue and what the opportunities are.
Sounds great.
Great, okay, so as we'll reach back to the S curve, go ahead, yes.
It may be a problem with timing because we don't meet very often and uh this is pointed out, there are certain rules regarding. The time to respond to applications, but. Whether or not. Couldn't we also just make a recommendation to the city council that any projects? Uh. Be reviewed also with an eye towards pedestrian. And bicycle safety.
Makes sense to me.
Because it does seem like some of these past projects that that has not been prior.
Certainly hasn't.
Right, well, as and as residents of the city, you know, uh, when site architecture, when these projects come forth in front of council and by architecture, we as residents or we as the commissioners could. Comment. This is publicly available, we can look at the plans and we can, we can start that way and and get ourselves involved that way, um.
But would it be all under your research project? What are you gonna figure out?
One of them that figured out, but I might.
Bring you information.
Yeah.
And again, uh, another alternative to have a then, a subcommittee of your commission. That responds more quickly when applications come through. Uh, review. Again, I think there there's a, you you would have the authority to create such a commission. And how that gets integrated in with the staff reviews. And the review calendar and requirements and so on. Um. You know, get getting guidance from the council as commission bill law. Uh, suggests to. To. Go on record or direct or. Uh, commission the commission. To be involved in development projects is certainly something that. You all could ask of the city council. One of the things that we hope to establish that doesn't seem like it's exactly. Caught on fire is a liaison program. Where council members. Attend, participate in these meetings and you perhaps have a a. A representative that attends council meetings. There are varieties of ways to have the council commission in sync. And raise issues like like has been suggested, so. Um. That's on my list for the new city engineer. To work with you and figure out.
Yeah, because we've had, I know on council we've had, we had the C one projects and you know, they provide all of the. The drainage and all of the information for site and architecture, and so there really probably wouldn't have been a role for us necessarily. Um, like constitution, for example, is one where it was required by site and architecture to build the uh the gutter. So there were some considerations, but I I think the point is well taken that there isn't continuity and. In light of what Mr. Jackson said about the S curve and the new house built there and why did we take an opportunity at that point? That makes perfect sense, so. Whatever we can do to kind of create a continuity that would be super. Alright, great, uh, anything else about the expert?
Bring back them.
Uh-huh.
Someone will bring back to a report.
Yeah, thank you. Um, so then, so then what do you think about the S curve in in terms of creating a subcommittee? Do you think that's necessary? Do you, would you guys be? Interested in doing something like that to work with the ad hoc, work work with the ad hoc committee?
Um, I might got feeling is if they wanted our involvement, they would have invited.
They basically want to take it, they want to hand it to us. Yeah, uh, so that that's my understanding is that they they're doing all of the studies. And once that comes in, then we can kind of take the ball and go from there with respect to conducting stakeholder.
Uh, I might state it, I think if the. If you look in the mayor's. Fourteen page document, there is in there as a a just short of construction step. Collaborating with stakeholders, and I think that's the point at which. That report would be referred to BSC for.
Yeah.
Um, your review comment.
Okay.
Just short of construction.
Once, once the the report comes back with the suggestions?
First of all, the design.
The design, okay.
And and the guidance to the to the uh discussion with consultants are that. That report would have a layered approach. Try this, try this and escalate. Uh, till you get the results you put in form.
I think.
But but that report would would be discussed with all the stakeholders that the mayor lives.
Okay.
And as I recall, BSC is in that list.
Alright then, is there anything other questions about the S curve at this time? I do obviously we can't do anything about it.
Yeah, I'm alone. I mean, there are certain things that seem oddly specific, like ballards and restripping, but.
Yeah.
Funny how that happened.
Yeah.
I I so it it seems like it's flowing in in a in an odd way to me.
I think these are all the possibilities. That's how I sort of took it. And then we will we will determine which makes more sense for that curve.
It it is getting direction from the highest levels of the city. Authorities.
So they have selected the kind of treatment they would like. Is that?
Um, the kinds of treatments.
Mm-hmm.
Um, with some specificity. Uh, yes, that's been part of the guidance. To the consultant and discussion with the control.
I would personally prefer a more open ended consultant discussion.
Yes.
So was that a discussion of like a nineteen mile per hour speed limit sign?
Actually, that is on the table.
There is, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I think there were thirteen and a half.
Thirteen and a half.
Yeah.
Well, I know that uh. In the past, there were, I think, three different. On uh signs on Kyo Road. Twenty one, twenty two, twenty three. I think now there is just one. And I I think that at some point, there was an issue at once with them being stolen because they was unusual. Um. But it it doesn't seem like that.
That's why.
Doesn't like a bad thing to do, it's just because it's not very expensive, may not be very effective. But it also gives our city a little more character.
Why that number?
I don't know if you saw the Rick reviewed article on that. Sign treatment. It was, they had quite a write up about it, but.
Oh, is that right?
And. I I worked for the city, so I told it when my colleague Greg Mulder put those up. And the results at that time, they they weren't notable in slowing traffic. Now, maybe averting drivers looking at signs is a place for the road, but.
Okay, then, so I'm free, I think.
It sounds, in a sense, is very creative way to give attention with. Nineteen point five, there definitely there are a lot of discussion and attention.
Yeah, one of the challenges is the accident, recent accidents have involved impaired drivers. Um. It's not just not paying attention, they. By drugs and alcohol were physically impaired. And so. Then you get to the question of what's the cure? For impaired driver caused accidents. That's a much more problematic.
Mm-hmm.
Question, but anyway, the traffic expert is going to be returning with a report soon.
Okay. Well, look forward to getting getting that and seeing what uh what would make sense.
Will that be at a council meeting? Or how would how would I, if I want to, I would need some observing. Of your name or appearing the report.
I said, the report will be referred to the commission and so on. I will ensure that the commission gets that as soon as possible. Because the project is on a bit of a fast track.
And one other very minor thing, that's uh on page four, city reviews the S curve design. Police and postal service, I think fire department.
Yeah.
Could be on there.
I thought it was, but yes.
I I think, yeah.
They certainly certainly will be.
Yeah, I assume it would be, but it kind of stands out for missing from that list.
Any other questions? We have a for this.
Okay.
Alright, do you have any questions? We're moving on to um. Do you have any other question before we decide to table? Okay.
About bicycle and must. Bicycle and master pedestrian plan.
Mm-hmm, you got it. We'll never get it straight, okay.
Yeah, I I have a suggestion, we have a um. Monte Serena residents picnic coming out, right, in August. On the, I always want to, can we uh ask residents or. Neighborhoods who are connected to highway nine to say they, how often they use the road, the road. Are they, like, how are they interested in, you know, this development if it happens? And uh. We can use this data to show the culture and that this number of people responded that they are, but. You know, very interested in in this project to happen, because what I. I think I shared, um, after the last meeting, I shared a review about culture and um. Master plan and um. In the in the fact, uh, in in none of the residents uh. Share their opinion and they said that no one from the city of Monte Serena contacted them. That we have problems in the city to fix. Uh, I wanted their statement because we've been working on master pedestrian um plan for so long. And the fact that they didn't hear from us, it is like, I I think we should, and then they also have emails. Over the least part people are working on this um culture and. Uh. Plan and and they have emails, so you can contact them. I was wondering. Uh, who can, like, me, who can do that? I'll be as a commissioners. Can contact them and uh say that Monte Serena has a master pedestrian bicycle plan. And share our ideas on this plan, it's kind of like a secret and we could not share it with anyone.
It's not a secret, you have the public, maybe, so they definitely have the abilities to run your eyes as me, but if it sounds like you're. Interested in like creating a survey that could be distributed.
Yeah, so there are two two points. First, uh, the first point is sharing with the residents during the picnic meeting that. The city is working on Dave's Avenue on uh. Highway nine pedestrian walk plan, so residents will be familiar with it and with the work. On this master pedestrian plan. And the second part is can we like share this document as a link with culture and so they will. Take a look at what issues the city of Monte Serena has in terms of the highway nine and doing. Um. Uh, doing the pedestrian walk, like filling the gap. On the highway nine. Because uh if we will collaborate with the culture and or they will finance the project. It would be great if we would be aware that we have a session, because on their website, it sounds like no one has brought it up to them.
So do you think then, um, so do you like to say at the picnic, a survey conducted? Primarily of the highway nine neighbors. That live on highway nine, but also Dave's, but 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 I know you brought this up because of Caltrans day that there was no. Input, so we can conduct the survey like we did last year, didn't we, was the survey for the VPN be done last year? So then we can do another lens of same, right, this specific, and I like the idea of being able to present it to Caltrans and Dave here. This is what we have, but I wonder also to to add, is it possible to have a Caltrans representative? Don't come to the picnic. Possible, I mean, we definitely want to invite folks to provide, I mean, anybody that, and then they can see first hand. People and engage in conversation, I wonder if that's possible.
Mm-hmm, um, yeah, that's a great idea too, and also, uh, we can contact them. Uh, with the emails that they listed at the end of the plan. Um, and ask them, what's the best way to submit the survey and how they would like it presented to them, so. Uh. We'll make sure that in their plan, it doesn't say like zero people approached us. Zero residents are interested in this and the same in terms of the city of Monte Serena, that we will um. Like, we actively instead of being aggressive and not contacting them at all. Even though we've been working on this master plan even before I joined for a long time. Okay, I like that idea, but and then that email, we can write them. We can give them an invitation to the picnic, so if they're interested in. Meeting residents and listening about the this gap. Uh, a lot, I mean, one out of five people should respond, I think, based on expectations.
But uh, who would be uh responsible to be to write this email? Well, I think the survey, we would work up, we would come, probably go together, what kind of questions we don't want to ask on the survey, right? And we can probably do that as a permission and as an email, would that be? You're the point of contact, or will you be the point of contact in August?
Not necessarily.
Right.
Um, I guess, strikes me as. I guess the city council. Commission's having a picnic. And there's somebody, I guess.
We conduct, we have now your picnic that we invite all our residents to.
Understood, understood. The authority to do that, I think accrues from this council. In in a inherent authority to have a picnic.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so. And somebody, I I suppose, you know, is in charge of. Organizing that. So if if the commission wanted to recommend to the council to. Do what's just been discussed. Questionnaire, invite Kalvin. Whatever your recommendations are, I would suggest that you do that as soon as possible. And give, because again, I think. Now, I'm some authoritarian about it, but I think it's their picnic for everybody. Uh, and by lots of people. But it would be appropriate protocol, it seems to me, to have them, you propose to do this at the picnic. You're a commission that serves at their pleasure. And then you can also tell them how you want to do it, get how to get it done. Um. Is the commission gonna draft the survey? Is the commission gonna have somebody there? Last year, right, as I understand it, the. Last year, as I understand it, the consultant was there and set up a table, and. It was that kind of an arrangement. So I just think it would be good to have clarity between you and the council as to what y'all want to do. I'm sure they'll say that's great, but I think that that question should be asked.
So at the June twenty council meeting, we could go. And during open oral communications, we can.
Is it June twenty?
And twenty is the next council meeting, and then they're off.
Oh, come soon, I thought, oh.
June twenty is the next council meeting, and then they're off, I think. Um, the plan is, no meetings in July.
July, right.
We're extending, and then, but that would be one way to address it, that you come to the meeting, and at the beginning of the meeting. Oral communication, introduce yourself and let them know that this is something. You know, because it's it's not based, that's you you can present an oral communication, something that's already on their agenda.
You know, I I like the idea of setting up the booth, like they did last year, to get public and about the one. Um, master pedestrian plan. And also, just want to make to make it clear, the point is not to invite Caltrans to the picnic, the point is to. To contact them with a question, how we can. And give them the input on the issues.
So the residents.
I'm sure, that's all I heard.
Yeah, I heard you say too, that you want a Caltrans. Well, I mentioned, I mentioned, would it be, would it be worthwhile to have a Caltrans representative? But it may not be, I mean, I don't even know if it's possible.
I don't even know who they have.
I I'm right, I mean, knowing how things work for me, um, okay.
The the main thing, to contact them and just ask the question, how we can put in what, how we can send them our. Uh, ideas, what we've been working on, on this master plan. Uh, because it sounds like our goals are aligned, like we want this gap to be fixed, and they have it marked on their plan as well. But because city has not contacted them, they. We, like, we are not sharing plans between each other.
I I I just have to say, that's nonsense for Caltrans to represent in any way they've not been contacted.
Right.
That only speaks to an organization that in comparing.
But it's clear that on their plan, that there was zero input from the city.
Whoever wrote that.
Input was thought, probably.
Well, no, whoever wrote that plan is is not aware of certain segment of reality. Cities been spending tens of thousands of dollars and communicating to a portion of Caltrans regularly. Trying to get approval and a permit to do the improvements. So. That whoever said that in that committee, commissioners.
This conversation highlights the problem we've got with Caltrans, because they, you can talk to them and they don't hear it, and.
Just like HCP.
Even worse, I think.
Ah, yeah.
Uh, it's a large organization, and there are a lot of stuff changing and challenging in places. Uh, and I think we should try one more time, because they're based in mass, and maybe there are people working on this project. Who is who are not aware, that's why they were looking at a master plan, maybe there is a different teamwork in this, and they share their contact publicly. So we can like, try to write the email, how we can share our plans and work on this together, or maybe they do.
Well, I I would just want to say, what's gonna get the improvements built that you're looking for, commissioner, is money. And that money's not gonna come from the Caltrans, but may come from a grant that flows through Caltrans. But somehow, and again, one of the the things that I'm hopeful that your new city engineer can do, that. Your last one did some of, which is find grants, apply for grants, and get money, money's gonna get that bill. Caltrans dysfunction notwithstanding, and there are pockets of money out there to to be had, you find them and chase them.
Why do you think they will not finance the project, it's on their map, and they said they they're working on this Highway Nine. I mean, they're working on Highway Nine. They highlighted it, why do you think they will not finance the project that they're working on?
If if they had a pocket of money to do that, I would be the first to stand up on cloud and tell you about it, they that's. There isn't, uh, I have seen, and I asked our consultant, BKA, who's worked on the gap project. If there's any avenue to pursue on this, and they basically said, no. That that's that pedestrian plan is nice PR, and it sounds good, but it all boils down to money.
Priority, right?
And priority, that's exactly right.
Project considering the rest of California.
But again, I'm I'm hopeful that the new person will will have insights that I don't about how to get money out of Caltrans.
At the same time, they prioritize the third as a second, though, they're only three steps, first, like emergency things to fix. Second, the priority, and third, so it's kind of like in the middle, it's not like somewhere far. And also, we've been contacting the agency, the one that. Be be a, what what their obligation is, say.
BKA.
BKA, but we haven't contacted them directly to the humans of the road, so we know only the information that BKA.
Well, I think going forward, I think your idea, we could at least get the input from the, and keep it on record with Caltrans. Some some public input, so we could at least get that going, and then coupled with, hopefully, our city engineer that can get the funding, and we'll just. Keep shipping away at this thing, but I think it's at least wise to get comments.
Yeah, my question was, can we share our plan with the master pedestrian?
Of course, it's covered in public.
Can I have a look at it as the problem?
Right, right.
Couple comments, what I'm hearing, Italian, silly one thing is. If we're able to talk to Caltrans and try to figure out if there is an effective way to communicate with them, because that that seems to be a challenge. Also, you had suggested a poll at the picnic. And you had suggested, I believe, another opportunity for residents to review the master plan. If that's the case, right now, we're talking about tabling while S curve and other things that we worked on. So this would involve tabling it through at least whatever the picnic's gonna help. I would assume. And for the questions for the poll, we're only meeting one time before the picnic, right?
Right, and so, yes, and so there, are we even meeting, are we meeting in July?
No.
No. So we require two members. Creating, I guess, a subcommittee to create the poll questions.
The big ones at the end of the month, you guys still have to kind of be discussing anything in the next year.
Okay, okay, so we can, we can agenda that, potentially.
Yes, yeah, the picnic's on the twenty seventh, and your meeting is.
The second Thursday.
Second Thursday.
So that would give the subcommittee time to work in that language. You already have much of it up here anyway. Does that make sense to everybody?
Mm hmm.
Okay, and this, okay, so that's a future agenda item, so let's go back, thank you, that's fantastic. Now we can put it, item number four, which is to agree on tabling. The master plan until we get the appropriate map approvals. And language. We all agree?
Yeah, just to clarify, do we feel that we're done with it, other than these fine tuning, or are we tabling it to take it up again down the road? Would you?
Well, we're we're tabling it until the map is correct. Uh, and it's when 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 that map comes in, and it comes back with the added language about. The future study that we want to do, and the conversation we want to have with them, so on. That's my understanding.
Well, also. If we are going to, again, give residents other bike, yeah, full opportunity to comment on it. Then we should probably wait to finalize it until after that.
Well. Right, and I don't think, and council won't, we wouldn't be putting it to council before then anyway, because I think, how long will it take for HF, the federal highway? People to approve it?
I would hope we would have the approval in July.
Okay.
From what I've been told.
Okay.
I do not guarantee the federal government.
Okay, so I think it's probably. A big assumption that it wouldn't get directed to council until after the picnic.
Okay. Well, are you.
Timing.
If we want that opportunity to respond to public comments made at the picnic. Our next scheduled meeting is October.
Okay, so, okay, question now, this this. Plan was already conducted, the the study was already conducted by the consultants, so that's done, that's a done deal. So I think the survey that we're talking about is for the Highway Nine gap, because there was already a survey done for this last.
Natalia made two suggestions, one was a poll at the picnic, another was to present again. Uh, the the bicycle pedestrian master plan and see comments as we did last year. Am I, am I mishearing that?
Yes, it's correct, like last year, they just showed the map of Monteserena to residents, and. Everyone could approach and show them the map, the area, the problematic area. Uh, and I think I think it's a good idea to show the residents what the commission, the city are working on, and share the plan and see. Uh, yeah, people, other residents, who are the suggestion.
Have we done this, though? Have we, this this is thing, hosted. Well, it's shared, definitely have been posted. I I don't remember exactly what Jessica, former CEA engineer did for the picnic in regards to the master plan last year. I I wasn't as heavily involved as I am right now.
Of course, it wasn't written.
Right, so this is the. You know, after that was all taken in, this is what, this is what we have.
This incorporated picnic information.
Right, okay. So I.
It's it's a reach that from what was shown before, I was present at the picnic, and I just saw maps of the city. Uh, and then when I joined commission, um, I I was a newcomer, I hadn't seen the pedestrian and master plan. I feel, I would say, angry, that's why. Being just a resident, I don't think we go up immediately.
I think we can take this up at our next meeting, I'm worried that we're kind of going, a little, kind of going off piece a little bit, um. But, you know, went well taken, fortunately, obviously, the more, the better. So again, I think we all can agree that we'll table. The plan until we get the appropriate map and the language, if we are satisfied with the language, and of course, we'll have the picnic, and. We can agree to that, right? Okay, great, okay, let's move on. To, let's see, this item here.
New business.
New business. Twenty twenty-three SB one city council resolution adopting a list of projects for SB one funding.
As is required by. State law. With respect to what's called SB one, the city is required to identify streets. To be maintained or otherwise improved using SB one funds, at least in Florida. Right, by Jan, by the line first each year. So on the city council agenda. Before yesterday. There was a report asking them to adopt a resolution designating Constitution Avenue Greenwood. Road as street to be improved in this year's pavement improvement project. That's consistent with actions that the commission took in April, where you looked at revenues and potential projects. Uh, and concurred in the inclusion of Greenwood and Constitution in this year's maintenance, pavement maintenance project. So by adoption of the resolution, we will file that with the. The SB one folks in Sacramento and comply. We are not, the city is not obligated specifically to do all of. Or any part of those streets any particular way, the city retains its. Uh, discretion on what to do and how to do it, and how much to do, which is frankly important, because. Uh, as we finalize the plans for the work on those streets, costs are higher than anticipated, so. The. Project, as it will be taken to the street, will include a a base bid. Which will be within the three hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars allocated by city council next year's budget. For pavement maintenance. Uh, it will also have what's called add alternates or alternate bids for additional work. Um, so we will have contract prices for that additional work. Um, that bid results, we anticipate taking back the council. Uh, on their first meeting in August, I think the August second. And they will have options at that meeting. Based upon the bid prices, at this point, we're using engineers' estimates. Um, at that point, we will have hard numbers from a contractor, the the contractor will be selected based on the base bid. Uh, and then they, whatever their prices would be for additional work, so council will have the option of doing base bid. Uh, and any additional work that will be defined for them. Either because it came within the budget dollars, or they could add additional dollars to. To the activity, to the program for this year, and do additional work. The. At at the end of the fiscal year, by December first each year, the city is obligated to report. To the state SB one folks, what was in fact done, so. This upcoming. Uh, report will likely include the work we did last fall, which didn't get paid for until. December, January last year. Um, and then the subsequent year, we would report to the state. Uh, the work done in the twenty twenty-three pavement improvement project. Conclude my comments, be happy to answer any questions.
Minor question, so the base bid, are you gonna ask them what they can do for three hundred and thirty thousand?
We're we're going to, we will define the work, we'll have plans and technical specifications. That say, here's what you're gonna do and how you're gonna do it. We'll get prices for that work, and for each of the add alternates, as they are defined in the package. What, at this point, the base bid looks like it will be Constitution East of Seabreeze.
Just that, and not?
That that, yes. Um, how much of Greenwood we can do, and in what way? It's a challenge, Green Greenwood cul-de-sac, if you happen to have been there, has some unique features. Here those unique features is going to, going to be somewhat expensive undertaking, but. We're gonna do as much of Greenwood as can be done, and or as much as the council chooses to pay for.
Thank you. Can those streets and project be separated, one is going to be Seabreeze Avenue and all this Greenwood lane, and the budget be separated?
They are separated. We will get bids on the different streets separated, not separate bids, but. There is a bid schedule, it says, here's the work on Constitution, here's the work on Greenwood, how much for each item? And the sum total of that of the bid is based on that specific order.
Uh, because I I I looked at local maps, like how the little streets are painted, and Constitution Avenue, it looks like it uses a lot more traffic. Um, than the Greenwood lane, because Greenwood lane is a dead end street. And it looks like Constitution Avenue has no priority, for me, it looks like it has no priority in terms of fixing it, and. Because more residents are using it, and. And, yeah, that's. That's my comment about that.
And commission did agree that those were the two most, I think. We prioritize basically to talk to the constitution being the the highest priority.
Yeah, the May twenty-two pavement evaluation report. Shows the P C I's, that's the pavement rating, pavement condition index for those two streets. I'm not gonna say the lowest, but amongst the lowest in the city.
Right, forty-two and forty-six respectively, right?
Very good, you did your homework.
Right, wow, I I remember the whole P C I.
Um, did this report had had a number for the those dollars sort of Togo Road? Uh, because I'm take sometimes taking a walk from uh City Hall towards downtown Wasgados. And the payments are not in the way of condition.
State's problem.
Oh, right. It's not something that my speakers in charge of.
No.
Commission, a lot of you, any comment, any questions?
I do not.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Final, final, uh, final action, Dave's Avenue, we're striking at Dave's Avenue, sorry. Uh, chair, even though this is informational. Is there any members that have a wish to speak on this item regarding S V one funding? Your hands raised, right? Back to commission and thank you, and we'll move on to item two, Dave's Avenue, we're striking at Dave's Avenue School. Back to the floor.
Thank you, Chair Lauer, um. Would staff observed that the. Pavement striking and markings in the vicinity of Dave's Avenue's school are severely worn, but more so actually than mo- most of Dave's Avenue. Given the safety implications of that. Um, staff has initiated a. A repaint using paint, not thermoplastic. Uh, of that area from Winchester to Caven Lane. Um, that will be undertaken this year. While the school is out. Um, and um. So kids return, they'll have a fresh. Set of markings, uh. Thermal plastic is not used because it's significantly more expensive. And we really need to study Dave Avenue. Safety improvements, pavement condition and other factors before investing in thermoplastic marking. The new paint will last. Uh, several years while that study is done and. Um. The other thing about thermoplastic is it it has to be ground off before you do anything else. Uh, to the pavement, so. Rather than spend that larger sum on thermoplastic, again, doing a paint refresh is what this project is about.
Thank you, any questions?
I I would just, one point I add, which is that there will be no changes. In the striking that existed there, truly refreshing what's there. Um, the uh. K T U A study, um, for example, call for improvements, none of that work is being done. It's just a refresh, but it's been there.
So would that be center lane curves?
Actually, there's not a center lane per se, there are, there's a turn lane at Poppy.
Right.
A turn pocket, if you will.
Mm hmm.
Um. Otherwise, it's a double yellow. With bike lanes. On both sides.
Okay. All right, thank you, I mean. Is I have one question, was there discussion about a drop-off zone between Carroll Court and the church? In respect to this, okay, that's, okay, all right, that was, that was. Okay, uh, any other question before I take it to the public?
Just to comment to do.
Okay, that's gonna be after. Are there any members of the public wishing to speak with this item?
No, thank you.
Seeing that, we'll return it back to comments.
I just want to, this is the, so with projects, I'll take the rain and they could be done during the summertime and all the kids at home, but it's. It's a good time to do that.
Yeah, sure, makes perfect sense. Fantastic, okay, uh, I think we are just about done, um. Moving on to committee mission reports and in the main things report, I mean, this is. Uh, oh, council member comments here, that's interesting, I have a council member. Page here, okay, um. Moving on to future agenda items. Uh, I, anybody have a future agenda item? I actually think the. Topic of the picnic might be considered a future agenda item.
Mm hmm.
Because we can create the subcommittee.
Mm hmm.
Uh, do you have any future?
Well, one thing we discussed was how to um take advantage of development. And making improvements.
Yeah, okay. Okay. And then I will bring up a third, which was brought to me by a former council member regarding. The stretch on Dave's between the church and Carroll Court. On occasion, people park there for long term, um. And he was thinking that he made a suggestion that perhaps we can consider painting that a yellow zone for school drop-off during, for Monday through Friday school drop-off. I don't know if it's something that we can study or if. It means we have to go to the neighbors. But I'm just throwing that out there that that was brought forth by a former council member.
And I know. The only. Response I would offer is that there is currently a work order out to put red curbs. Uh, in that area because of the parking of the RVs.
Yes, okay, so that's already taken care of.
Well, but it's not, it's not what you just described.
Okay.
To pick up for drop-offs or whatever. I'm not sure how that would work, but uh. Again, it may get read before it gets.
On Dave's Avenue, across from the school, where the church is. And Carroll Court, which is to the south or to the east, I like to confuse, Carroll Court is. I don't see it to know now.
Is that what?
Right here, right here's Carroll Court, so it's it's this, it's this stretch right here, right across from the school.
Mm hmm.
That apparently is gonna be painted and then no stop and stop.
There is red curb in that area now, yes.
Okay. Oh, that's right, there is some, so they're just extending it. Okay.
So this is not gonna be a issue for us?
No, it sounds like it's already been addressed. All right.
Um. So. I'll just ask, because I don't know if it's appropriate or not for the agenda for us. What I wonder about is periodically. The. Fire department. I guess comes to the city and says, hey, we want to move some. Fire hydrants, want to put them in certain locations. And my understanding is the city on a pretty much a perpontory basis, just as. Good to go. And. Sometimes the locations, uh, which they, there there are certain requirements for how. Uh, far the fire hydrants or how close they have to be to other ones. But uh typically, there is some latitude replacement. And sometimes they're put somewhat um callously. Like I've seen them put one fifteen feet from a driveway entrance. Instead of putting it. Three feet from driveway entrance. What that that means is there is effectively. Uh, twenty-five feet of street parking that you've lost to the both ten and twelve. And. Long time ago, I thought the city about that and and that's how I gave my understanding that it's pretty much something the city just says, okay, put it where you want. And what I'm wondering is. Does that have to be the case and is that even in our jurisdiction to talk about or make a recommendation to the city? Since we deal with streets.
I've never heard seen the fire department. Install a fire hydrant.
You're right, not, they're not installing it, they they basically, it it's a. They're installed uh. By whatever utility installs the hydrants, but the fire department. Basically approves a plan for where they should go and then it comes to the city and the city just says. Take mark, you're done.
Uh, well, the way I would describe it is. The fire department and one of several agencies that review land development project. In the course of reviewing those, you're absolutely right, they would be given priority. Call on where to put the hydrants. To provide at minimum distance from structures to the hydrant. That's the sort of thing the fire department gives as input. Uh, but again, that's typically in larger projects. Monosino's not doing a lot of larger projects, so I'm not sure. It doesn't, it it's not beyond possibility that. Somewhere in the suite of land development projects. A new hydrant could get required by the by the fire department, they'd be the agency requiring a new hydrant. And saying it should be so many feet. Here or there. That probably has a certain amount of arbitrariness. I don't, I mean, they have ways of deciding where it should go and typically that what they say happens. The developer pays San Jose Water Company the money to install a new hydrant. And there you have it. That's what I. Think goes on, in my experience, that's what goes on.
Sometimes it's not for new development, sometimes they're just moving a hydrant.
Who they.
Uh, I'm, whatever agency it is that installs the hydrants.
Well, it's, well, the people. You, the hydrants are connected to the water main. And so.
So maybe it's the water company.
Well, somebody hires a contractor who does that kind of work and they connect to the San Jose Water. Water main with the collection of. fittings in the hydrant. To install it, but some somebody, I mean, we're talking probably fifty thousand dollar. So somebody's gonna wanna have a big reason for doing that and I'm not sure who.
Sorry, so I'm, is it not on the.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we're going, like, hey.
Well, that's what I'm asking, is it, the item that we could talk about?
So you'd like for a staff report to be brought back in regards to the the process of the installation of the hyd- of fire hydrants or?
What I'm asking, is it appropriate for us to make a recommendation? As a better streets commission.
For the.
To the council. To. Look at. Whenever there is an application. To put in a hydrant or move a hydrant. To actually just spend a little bit of thought looking at where it's placed to see that it causes minimal inconvenience to the whole thing.
All right, so some sort of informational.
So, that that's nice.
Thank you very much.
Sorry.
Thank you, Lindsay, I was just like, I know.
It just because I remember my city attorney talking in my ear at this point.
We don't have this.
All right.
No, but you know, she's in my ear when usually things start to go out of, uh, more into depth.
I'd be happy to discuss it further offline if you'd like to.
There you go, all right, well, that said, everyone, any other future agenda items? Okay, otherwise. We are good to adjourn. Nice meeting, thank you.
What the agenda item, the picnic, we're also gonna put subcommittee in there, right?
We did, yeah.
Okay.
Got created a subcommittee.